That people, if people like get a notification that we are, they'll see it. Um, but it's Yeah, so it's just like giving it. I have to wait for it to give us the link. Alright, so now I'm just gonna share this on our Facebook page. And then we will be good to go. Alright, okay. So that's gonna spinning wheel of death is going. How that is sometimes.
Well, you know, it's early in the morning too, so you know.
Yes. Okay, so let's get started. Um, so good morning, good afternoon, good evening. Uh, whenever you see this, if you are not joining us live, uh, my name is Heather Asianby. I am one of the co-founders of Racine County Eye. And I am its managing editor now. Uh, this is Coffee with Candidates, which we would normally actually be in the Racine County I offices with coffee. But um, I got sick earlier this week and I didn't want to get everybody infected if I still had cooties, so we're doing it on Zoom. Uh, I am joined today by Michael Hanson. He is running for a seat on the Racine Common Council representing the eleventh district. Um, Mike, why don't you, do you want Mike or Michael?
Uh, Michael, fine.
Okay, perfect. Michael, why don't you go ahead and take a minute and introduce yourself?
Uh, my name is Michael Hanson. I'm running for the eleventh district. Uh, I'm running for change, uh, for the better, for the community. And I want to to be that strong candidate that people can trust. And be able to understand what's really going on in the community as far as the things I have heard from homeowners and stuff like that. I want to be representative for the people. Not for nobody else. And that's where I stand.
Excellent. Alright, so um, we have ten questions, uh, divided into five categories. Um, so we're just gonna get started and um, and they're, you know, depending on like where our conversation goes, we might have follow-up questions. You know, you've done this before. We did this a couple of So, okay, here we go. Uh, local economy and development. Oh, and also, um, I want to let you know, but I also want to let everybody else know that like I have two screens. So like you're here, my camera's here, but the questions are over here. So I'm gonna have to keep turning just to like see what the question is. So. Um, alright, so local economy and development. What are your plans to attract and retain businesses in Racine, especially in the downtown area and along the lakefront?
Okay, my idea is it's always best to try to help alleviate some of the financial stress on as far as what I've heard from business owners downtown. They're expressing their concerns about they're letting Illinois people come up here and buy some of those buildings on Main Street. Now, they're buying these buildings and they're jacking up their rent. Now, a lot of them have told me, Mike, how are we gonna pay our people if they jacking up our rent? You know, and that's a big struggle for small businesses. And see, that's one thing about me. I know a lot of small business owners. And yes, they're going through a thing right now because it's like, uh, we gotta cut jobs just to make up that difference to pay our taxes and the water bill and stuff like that. And I don't like hearing that. I want to hear small businesses thrive. I want them to be able to be strong, hold their own. And not having to hear the stories where, hey, look at all these empty storefronts down there. What can we do to be able to alleviate some of that? It's called, hey, let's try to invest. If we don't invest into our community, what happens? It, it goes nowhere. And I feel like what's going on in the city today, they're not business savvy. They're not. I see. And that's one thing about me. I've always been about business because I used to have a business. So I know what it's like when you have to either cut jobs just so you can make up the difference of paying your bills. So, you know, at the end of the day is, we need some changes around here. We need somebody strong, vocal that's gonna be for small business owners. And you know, these people trying to buy these buildings and raising rent on them, that's not the way to go. Because that's why people don't want to rent here. It's too high. We need to focus building up our economy in Racine. To be able to thrive. And if we don't build up on that, we're building everything out in the county. What's going on Racine? Racine is a ghost town. And that's what I'm hearing from a lot of people.
Let me, let me, can I, can we like rewind just a moment? Because what I want to know is, um, what, when you say the business isn't business savvy, do you mean that there aren't enough alders on the common council who are business people? Or are you more meaning that they don't, it, it doesn't seem to you like the council is necessarily business focused?
See, my thing is, it's not really the alders. I'm not gonna even blame them because you know what? At the end of the day, i- it's per blame on the mayor as well, you know, because we're too busy focusing on building apartment buildings. Okay, while we're focusing on building apartment buildings and all this other stuff, where are the jobs? Do you want rent that's twelve hundred dollars a month on half these places? What, what is it? We don't give these people jobs, how are they gonna be able to afford the rent? You know what I'm saying? Is it, what's going on in Racine today? It's more apartment building. Where are the jobs?
We got all these We're gonna actually, okay, so thank you for bringing up housing. We are gonna, um, actually, that's the next question in the topic. So let's talk about that. So, so but there, so we do have, there, there are a lot of concerns, like you said, affordable housing, right? And not subsidized housing, but affordable housing, right? That regular people can afford.
Yes.
But we know that there is a very tight vacancy ratio, I guess for lack of a better word. On like what's available and what's not, both in terms of, um, how inventory for real estate for sale. Like homes for sale, but also there aren't enough apartments. Like not everybody wants to buy a house. So we, so we're, we're kind of, we don't have enough of either.
And it, I get what you're saying right there. See, because most of the seniors that own their homes, because they're the most ones I really worry about the most because I got a lot of retirees in my district. At the end of the day, when I sit down and listen to an eighty-two-year-old woman that lost her husband and she gets his pension and social security, and she's sitting there on a coffee with me on a morning telling me, Mike, I'm gonna have to sell my home and move into an apartment. You know, I, I don't want to hear them stories. There were stories I don't want to hear. And I'm a passionate person when it comes to the community. And that's just where I stand. And yes, I grant you, yes, you are right about the apartment deal. But the real facts are, is when you see what's going on, and I've lived here all my life. Racine used to rock in the nineties, man. It's like now it's about a power grab. And it's about where we're gonna put this money. We need to put the money back into the community where it belongs. Yes, we do need some more apartments. Yeah, you're right. We do not have enough. But at the end of the day, it's my concern, some of them apartments are turning into housing. And now Where, where some of the, okay, like some of the apartment buildings I know. Now, some of mine just found out that they go by thirty percent of your income. Okay, when you're doing that thirty percent income, that's what does that tell you? We're gonna apartment building matters.
But I think you're raising a good point too, because and, and, and this is recent data. You know, time is fluid and I read a lot of things, so don't ask me when I read it or where I saw it, but I'll look it up right now. But, um, there is, there was, I don't know, study maybe, I don't know, but, um, I don't think there's really any state in the union right now where you can work for fifteen dollars an hour and afford a two-bedroom apartment. Like, no state in the, it's not, it's not just Wisconsin. It's even places that you might not think about, like Kansas or, you know, North Dakota. And while they're having a big building boom out there, but you know, um, but there are states that you might consider, you might have always thought of as like more affordable living. But now, nobody can afford it.
No, they can't. Even down in Florida, I got friends in Florida and Atlanta, they're even telling me, Mike, it's housing market is, woo, it's high.
Right, so, but then the question is, what is the city's role in addressing that? So it's not just about affordable housing, it's also rising rent costs and the, the lack of inventory. What is, what do you feel like the city's role is in kind of addressing those things?
It's kind of like trying to help get some more developers in the city to try to help get some of these empty spots that are all around town. Cause I got tons of pictures around the whole city of Racine. But all these empty spots, now I'm here and all these apartment buildings being built here, built there. Okay, where are they at? And all, you got all these stuff lying that's open that it could do development on it. You know, let's, let's do some of it. Instead of like that, look like a cornfield and not being cut down, grass being cut. Come on, let's do something with that to make, to make Racine look wonderful again. Cause right now it just looks like a ghost town with all these empty lands, everything's all wide open. That doesn't look right. I want Racine back to the way it used to be. And yes, if it takes to work with developers and let's come up with some bright ideas to kind of bring Racine back up, I am all for it. You know, because I love Racine, I love the people here. And that's where I stand. Yes, I, I want to bring jobs back. I guess, if we can build more apartments.
I'm sorry, I'm super distracted by your little boy behind me like, hello.
Oh, no, that's, that's my daughter.
That's your daughter? I'm sorry. Hi, hi, sweet girl. What you doing? They're laughing and, okay, sorry, super distracted. Okay, anyway, um, alright, so let's, let's move on to, um, we have a lot more to cover, so let's move on. Alright, so public safety and community well-being. So public safety obviously is a top concern for people, but when we're talking about public safety, I kind of want us to expand our definition of that. Because it's not just about law enforcement, although obviously law enforcement is a big piece of that. But it's also about education, healthcare, poverty, um, well, addressing poverty, it's about, uh, employment. It's also, um, and I forget, it was, I was talking to someone this week, one of the candidates. I think it might have been, I think it might have been your opponent, Mary, who was, uh, discussing public safety in terms of like, it's also about like getting your streets plowed, right? Like, that's public safety. So what strategies do you support to reduce crime as part of a strategy addressing public safety and improving relationships between law enforcement and the community?
The one big key, and this comes from this man Marty DeBuddy that I know personally. If we do not get the police officers to kind of ride their bikes, get out there, ride scooters, whatever, in the summertime, engage with the community. They used to do that. They used to get on their bikes, they used to ride, talk to people, how's it going? Just ride through, talk to people. But you know, it was nice because that's what you call police and community engagement. I would love to have that back because like I said, I used to talk, I used to see officers ride past my house all the time. Hey, how you doing? He said, we're just out checking the neighborhood, talking to people. And I love that. And that's, that's one of those scenarios that a lot of things have stopped. That I don't like is, like the police officers tell me to say a thing, Mike, how are we supposed to know if they don't engage with us? And I agree with, when I go to neighborhood watch, which I do, and I hear a lot from some of them officers, like they say, if, if people don't call us, how can we fix the problem? And, and at the end of the day, I believe in, yes, police officers are stretched thin right now because they need more people. I totally get it. But what I'm saying is, if they can be able to have the flexibility to be able to get out here in the community, let's talk to people. I don't want people, people to feel threatened at, oh, because the police officer on the block, I need to run. No. I don't want people to have to feel like that. Them to feel like the police officers are their best friend too. And, and that's where I stand with that. Because like I said, the police, the promise is the most important thing as far as public safety. We need them because without them, it'd be a war zone. Especially with gun violence, drugs, drugs at all time. And looking at all these people killing themselves over, but no, cocaine, weed, I, I, I've been watching it all for the past few years. And it, it's a nightmare and it's sad to see that, you know? And that, that's why I said, I, I would love to get everybody out to neighborhood watch. Like that's what I want to put in, in District eleven, the neighborhood watch meeting. I want to get the community together. I want them to be able to talk to officers, be able to all communicate. That's how it should be because I know Renee Kelly has one in the earth every three months, but you know, we don't have one of them. I want to have one of them at Home Park. I can open the doors, have a neighborhood watch meeting. Get the community in there. Let's hear your concerns and let's try to fix them. And that's what we need to do.
Okay. Alright, so same category, um, public safety and community well-being. Um, there's been a lot of discussions at different levels of government, uh, regarding youth engagement. Um, what role do you believe the city should play in providing opportunities for young people to, uh, succeed and stay out of trouble?
See, now, that's a good one too. A lot of the young kids that I talk to, because I'm one to try to help people, like young children, I do a lot of that. I encourage them to get their education, go to college, be something. That's where I stand. And I do, I do a lot of my kids' friends and all of them, I tell them, listen, drugs are not the answer. Alcohol is not the answer. The answer is, think about your future. Now, if we can get a lot of people out here, like I know some people that are in that dance program that help the youth, you know, try to get them off the streets and get them headed the right direction, which is good. I met them at the festival hall that Racine, I think they had that celebration of Racine Hundred and Seventy Fifth or whatever it was called. I met them guys down there and he was like, Mike, goes, yes, we need to get a lot more fathers out here. Let's get more parents, more active in the community to help. You can't just put it all on the city. City is not always the answer neither.
Okay, so this is one of the things that I've been talking with, um, the other candidates about too. Uh, um, both for the city and then I talked with, um, Nancy Pierce yesterday from Caledonia because they're, you know, we're even though Caledonia is a very different community than the city, you know, we also have this issue. I know that, um, so thirteen-year-olds, they're like too old for day camp, but they're not old enough to work. So like, that thirteen to sixteen age, like, what, those are the kids that, that are kind of getting caught without really anything to do. And then, you know, kids with too much time on their hands.
And that's where they pay.
So what it, what is, how do you see the city playing a part in making sure that that age group in particular um, has something to do either after school or during the summer?
Well, see, like, okay, now during the summer, they have those house things over at parks, which is a good thing. I've always loved that. I think that park and rec, they do over at the parks where they open the doors and they have those. I love that. I've always loved that to get kids to doing some activities and keep them from, but a lot of times, some things can be out of your control that city or parents can do. Because it all depends on if you're a leader or a follower, you know, because it does play a big role. But a lot of times, and, and that's what I said, you can't just always blame the city for it, but the, the city really, all it can really do is kind of engage in like, do a little bit more activities between that age range. Like, okay, back when I was a kid, um, they had a place called Nonstop.
I'm sorry, what was it called?
It was called Nonstop.
Nonstop?
Yep. And it was only for the kids to play pool, play darts, no drinking. It was just, it was like a convenient, uh, place in there for food, drinks, for kids to just get out and relax and play pool. If we could open up something like that, a recreation center, something where they can play pool, basketball and all this. Because I'm hearing stories that these, uh, rep places are closed. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give you a little story. Now, you said between thirteen and sixteen, right? Tell me why the other day when I was out walking doors, I seen two kids with a basketball. They were sitting on the door by Home Park. I'm like, you guys can't get in and play basketball? No, it's always closed. I'm like, really? It's like, yes, we come here all the time just to see if we can catch it, see if it'll be open for you, going to play basketball. One was thirteen and one was fifteen. They want to play basketball. They couldn't even go in there and play basketball. See, hearing stories like that, see, if the city really wants to help, then open these doors so these kids can go do something that they want. They love basketball. Basketball is
There has to be staff though too, right? Because you can't leave a bunch of thirteen to sixteen-year-olds without some adult supervision because that's, that's going to be for more trouble.
Right, right. But I think even if you just, because I know over at the, what is that, John Bryant Center over on the south side? Okay, they had one lady at the front there that I knew for years. Used to be there all the time. She was like, I get a lot of kids coming here to play basketball, a lot. And if that's something that we can kind of help, the city could help, that'll be a blessing. Because like I said, I hear stories of all walks white, whether it's kids, through all that. And a lot of them say, there's nothing to do here. Why? You know, I don't know why my parents are here because there's nothing to do here. And we have to come up with some strategy to try to bring something, whether open up these centers. Like even, yeah, it's gonna take a little money, but if it's something that'll help save lives and then help keep kids off of drugs and alcohol, that will be a blessing. Because trust me, we need our kids.
We're gonna be taking care, making these decisions in a few years, right?
Yes. And like I said, I don't want to have to bury my kids. I want my kids to bury me. And I, and I, and it's just, I don't want to see it. Like I've got a lot of friends that lost kids that, no. I've had a lot of friends that lost kids for drugs and alcohol. And I, I don't like seeing it. And that's why I tell you, I got a, I got a passion when it comes to racing. And I love the people here. And like I said, I, I, I'm here for anybody. I tell them, my door is open. Even when troubled kids, they know my door is open. They come knock on my door, Mike, can I sit down and talk to you? Sure, that's just the kind of person I am. Because you know, yes, even like I said, but if we could help with the centers, that would be a bless, that would be a start. And then you'll see how bad, you'll see all these kids playing basketball.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna move on to infrastructure and transportation. So, what are your priorities when it comes to road repairs and infrastructure improvements in the city?
Alright, one, we need to get all new contractors. I'm gonna tell you that right now. This bidding that they're doing is no good. That all needs to change. Now, they just did my road last summer.
Okay.
Now, tell me why. That I had to call the city engineer, they haven't come back and measured this road. I'll tell you what, when he got done measuring it, he shook his head.
Why? What, what was the problem?
Because when, when they did the road, you know how they measure it to make sure it's, everything's
It has to be, it has to peak just a smidge in the middle and then go, because you would need water drainage.
Yes, well, this one here, no, we got floods.
You got what?
They've got floods, more water.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I called the city engineer, he came out, took pictures, and he took that little rolling step, went down the whole road. He came back to me and just not good. He said, we're gonna probably have to dig all that up again. And that, and that, yeah, these, these people that are doing these roads, and then I'm tired of watching, every time I turn around, they do a road, they're going back digging it up again.
Okay, so you're saying that the city needs a whole new slate of contractors to complete the work because the contractors who are currently doing the work are unreliable.
Not good at all. And I'm not gonna name them names because I'm not gonna put them out there like that. So I don't do that because I'm not an evil person, you know? So, but that's what I'm saying. And that too is the biggest thing too. They do all the roads that are somewhat not too bad. I didn't do those ones, but the ones that are extremely bad, like there's quite a few of them in, in the eleventh district, that need to be done. Yes, I understand it costs money. Yes, enough. Everything costs money, anything you do. But it's called when you sit down and you really focus on the city and the roads and bridges and stuff like that. Then sit down and look at all of them. What everyone's are the worst should be the ones that should be more of the priority than the ones that are men. So that, that's where, that's why I stand with that.
Okay, so, um, same, um, topic, so infrastructure and transportation. So there is a push for some more, uh, for more sustainable transportation options. Um, not just in Racine, but kind of in like the whole southeast corner of the state here. Um, do you support expanding public transit and or bike-friendly infrastructure? And why or why not?
Yes, I do.
How do you see those two things, um, growing?
Well, one with the bike thing, that'll stop people from getting hit by cars. That, that would be beneficial on the bike side.
Okay.
Now, with the transportation side, with the buses and all that, yes, we need them buses. Because every day, yeah, there's jobs out in the county, a lot of people don't have cars. You know what I'm saying? And that, and that's what I hear from a lot of people too.
Yeah.
That, okay, they want us to get on the bus to ride all the way out there, but we got kids to take to daycare. How, well, we gotta take a bus to daycare to get back on another fair to
Yeah.
You know, if they had jobs more closer to home, it makes it easier for them, especially single moms. You know, I hear stories from them too. They're like, look, I'm a single mom, I got three kids. Hey, I work, but I gotta do all this. I gotta save back so much money just to get to work.
Well, we also have to think too, like the way that, you know, and I think Racine does a pretty good job with public transit considering the size of the community. But there is a time tax to taking the bus. So like you have to, like, let's just, for the sake of this conversation, say you have to be at work at nine. You probably have to leave home at like, especially if you have to take your kids to school first. You gotta leave home at seven. Take them to school and then get on a bus, it's gonna potentially not take you directly to where you need to go. You might have to go to the transit center and switch buses there before you can head out to like, I don't know, the Mount Pleasant Business Park that's out on twenty, right? Like, let's just use that as an example. You know, so there is, there is a time tax to that as well. So do, what do you, like, how do you think? How should the city rather approach expanding public transportation?
Well, the album, because I know, I know people that work at the bus company and that runs the bus company and stuff like that. So I talk to him a lot. He gives me an idea that, you know what? To get more money and get the community a little bit bigger and better is by, well, with that, uh, Microsoft thing coming. Okay, hey, let's get some transportation out there. Cause I'm sure a lot of people in Racine are gonna get jobs up there, the ones that don't have a car. You know, if we could branch out a little bit more, we, we might see more, you know, I turn out well for them, you know what I'm saying? Because just being just isolated in just Racine, yeah, Racine, Racine. But if you jump a little bit more, it will help with transportation. And then they're gonna worry about it being, you know, like, how do I want to put it? There's a word for it. But when you have to worry about funding, money not coming in like it's supposed to, you know, like you're on a budget. Okay, if you don't meet that budget, we gotta come up with ideas that will help, you know, stay within that budget range, but also get more transportation for other folks. Whether it's north side, south side, out in the county, stuff like that. If we can branch out, that's good. Because I, I talked to some people in Milwaukee too about that.
Yeah.
And said, yeah, Milwaukee, you're just all over the place. And I says, why don't Racine do it? I said, well, Racine used to have Route Nine back in the days. It ran from downtown out to Parkside.
Oh, so it's, it came out of Racine County when, I didn't know that. When was that?
See, a lot, well, see, my mother drove city bus for thirty years.
Okay.
So when she was doing it, man, they had Route Seven going all the way up to Sturtevant. That used to go up to Sturtevant.
Well, I will tell you, and I don't know what the situation is now, but the, um, Sturtevant, Mount Pleasant and Caledonia all chip in to, to the bus. And I know that there were discussions probably like, I don't know, ten, almost ten years ago now, let's just say, where they were a, a concerned that Sturtevant residents are paying for a bus that Sturtevant residents don't really use, or that Mount Pleasant residents don't really use, right?
I heard, uh, yeah, I heard something about that.
You know, so there were a lot of discussions about that, um, so I, you know, and I'm going to assume that feelings probably haven't really changed very much. I don't know that for a fact. But assuming that's still the argument, like, how do you counter? But assuming that's still the argument, like, how do you counter that from the city standpoint? How do you counter that?
So, what you do is, it will be better, okay, like prime example. Now, because they have Route Twenty Seven going out twenty. Now, when Route Seven used to go from downtown to Regency Mall. And I went out to Sturtevant. Now, when it used to go out the road, out, out to Sturtevant. That, that area was really good, because they had a lot of people going out to Sturtevant. Now, because you got that Walmart out there, you only go right to Walmart. They don't go in the Sturtevant like they used to. It just goes to Walmart. So, my idea with that situation is, they did have people going to Sturtevant. They did. I mean, my mother rode, drove that route for almost ten years. And watching all the people that would actually take a ride out to Sturtevant. I was really shocked. There was really a lot of people from Sturtevant that actually got on the bus. I don't even know why they ever stopped that, but I think it had something to do with the funding. That's why they ended up stopping it. They only ended it at Walmart instead of going all the way out by Amtrak train station. Cause that was when it used to be a little bit south, where it's at now. It used to be a little bit south, closer to that restaurant. I don't know if you've been out there to know where that restaurant is?
The which one?
That restaurant, I forgot the name of that restaurant out there in Sturtevant. It's right by the train tracks.
Yes, I can't remember neither. I can see it in my head, but I can't remember the name. Okay, doesn't matter. Anyway, go ahead.
They used to have an Amtrak station there, but they moved.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, yes, you're talking about like in downtown Sturtevant, like on Wisconsin. Uh, yeah, so. So that station was falling apart. They couldn't, it cost too much. So now it's out in Caledonia at the, like, area museum.
What's that one, what's that one right there by twenty?
No, that's the new Amtrak station. Like, and it's, well, I, I say new, but it's been there since like twenty fourteen or something like that.
Like, cause I remember when they were moving it over. Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, well, okay, so let's, so that's, I get what you're saying. In this way, I, I feel like what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like what you're saying is. Despite the fact that Racine, Sturtevant, Caledonia and Mount Pleasant are all technically separate municipalities, right? We are still all one community. And so, like, and we're all, we're all very interconnected east of the eye, right? Like west of the eye, they're a little bit more autonomous, right? East of the eye, we are very interconnected. And so if I'm correct, what I'm hearing you say is that it kinda takes a village, right? So somehow there's gotta be a pulling together to make the tide rise, so all the boats float.
Because I think if the county, Sturtevant and Racine got together and really came up with a nice, good deal. I, I think it'll turn out. I think what it is, is it is a disconnect. And we gotta get that, we gotta get.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you. Your daughter's killing.
She knows she be rocking.
Yeah, she's like, okay, uh, dancing to a tune in her own head. I admire that in her. Keep that energy, baby.
She does.
All right, so moving on to education and workforce development. How can the city better collaborate with education partners in the area? And that includes Racine Unified, obviously, is the, as the school district, but also um, our local colleges and universities. So Gateway, Parkside, Carthage, UWM, and even Whitewater. Cause Whitewater's only an hour away, right? That kinda counts as local. So how, how can the city collaborate with all those education partners? To better prepare students for the workforce?
Okay, my idea plan was, I went to that uh, Memorial Hall event that they just had, I think it was a couple weeks ago. All right, now when they have plans like that, where you got people, I don't know if you remember what it was, if they had a memorial hall. Um, you could walk in and they were doing doors, firefighters were there.
Oh, that was our, yeah, that was our thrive event. That was our home and wellness expo. Yeah, sorry, I was like. I didn't wanna say that that was the one, if that's not the one you meant, but yes, you had a lot of talk while we were there, yeah.
Yeah, I went, I went to that and I talked to a lot of people there. I bet, I think you were there too.
Yeah, I talked to you at the Racine County Eye Booth, yeah.
Yes, so my, my thing is, if we do more of those. And be more effective and advertise it more, cause that's the problem. There's so many things going on downtown. Add a lot of advertisement. And, and that's where the disconnect comes in. Oh, I didn't know that was there. Didn't I just think, see, here's my whole problem with this whole situation about this election. The problem is, is everybody thinks everything should be on social media. Okay, you mean to tell me you're gonna see a seventy-five year old woman, uh, it's a retiree, gonna have the internet now?
My mom is seventy-six and she is online every day.
Well, most of the ones in my district, they, they all still sent me telling me, Mike, how do we know? We, we don't have computers, we don't. They, the one, they all have flip phones. How do we know? See, like a lot of them went out, get them doors, they were like, okay, we didn't know this. Well, you get it? No, she goes, that's the thing, we need community engagement besides the internet. We need to get out here, knock on these doors, talk to people. You know, cause we don't.
Okay, let me ask you this though. So, you, what, so as a candidate, you're knocking on doors. That takes a lot of time. And if you're working and you're an alder and you've got all this stuff to do, like when? And I'm not saying you shouldn't make the time. I'm just, like, is that the most efficient way to communicate with your constituents? And, and that's a different topic. We're gonna talk about that in a minute. So, let's go back to collaborating with the schools.
Oh, that did it. So anyways, no, if we advertise it more and do like our workforce stuff. Where they do the jobs thing, like chase them over there, do a hiring event, stuff like that. We did something big at Festival Hall. Now, I met the guys that are running that Festival Hall, really nice people. I told them, I love the way they cleaned all that up. It looks really nice. And I told them, I said, yeah, we need to get more events done. Like whether it's, get the college campuses, come down, do a big recruiting thing towards the end of school year. Like around, what is it? School ends what in June? So we did something like in May. You know, did something big, get, get all the colleges together and say, hey. If we wanna encourage these young kids to better their future, let's get some of these people here, and let's do a big event. So now my kids will be like, hey, we're gonna go, let's advertise a thing. I don't care if it's Carthage College, or if it's Gateway, or if it's Parkside, whatever. Let's get the, the young ones, before they graduate, to attach on. So that when we know where their future is gonna lie, because if we don't focus on their education, we don't know where they're gonna be. You know, and that, that's the thing about kids too. I want kids to thrive and move up in the world. Not, don't, drugs and alcohol is not the, not the answer.
All right, so same, same category, um, as education and workforce development. Um, and based on everything you just said, I'm, I know your answer's gonna be yes. So, um, do you support expanding apprenticeship and vocational training programs in Racine? And if so, how do you see that happening?
Yes, I think Unified should kinda do it, uh, what do they call that? There's a word for it, I'm trying to think. But anyways, um. They should kinda do an advertisement with that in the community to let them know that, hey. You can do apprenticeship, you can do all like an internship at school to help.
I, well, and I'm wondering if the academies of Racine already kind of do that, right? Like, like for instance, okay, so I, I'm going to assume that, again, that this program is still going. But at Oak Creek High School, they have a construction class and you can do it at your junior and senior year. So junior year is more like, you're just assisting, right? Like just learning things. But your senior year, you're actually working alongside like an electrician or a plumber or a carpenter or masonry or whatever, right? And you actually help build houses that are then sold on the market. That go back into the program, so then they buy another property and then they do, like, right, they do that back and forth. And I'm not saying Racine has that exact same program, but I do, I think through the academies of Racine, those opportunities might already be available. But, I mean, but if you and I are questioning them, like how well, like, maybe we. The word isn't, as you say, right? The word maybe not is, is out there as much as it could be.
Right, but, well, see, and that's the thing, it's all about advertisement. Like, okay, prime example, anything and everything that's being done in the city. There's not enough advertisement for the young kids to know these things. And I've learned that, cause I watch a lot of things and I pay attention to a lot of things. Cause one friend of mine told me two years ago, Mike. Pay attention to everything.
Wait, I can't hear you. What'd you say?
A friend of mine told me two years ago. Pay attention to everything, and then you will understand everything. And a lot of this has to do with advertisement. If, if you want, and this is the thing about the city too. If they're tired of crime and all this, we need to come up with a crime initiative that makes some sense. Not just, not just this, yeah, I heard stories about what programs they got going on right now, but that's a whole nother situation. But what I'm saying is, like me as a, if I was an alderman, me, I'm gonna be out here every day, all day. It, it doesn't matter, because I want my district to know that I am here for you. I want them to know that if I make a phone call, you'll come to my house, have coffee, and I can address my issues. Yes, I'll have coffee with all my constituents. Because that's just, well, I'm, I'm old school. And that's what a lot of people don't understand. I don't need to do all this advertising, don't, I wanna go and physically meet people. Now, I knocked on one thousand seven hundred eighty-two doors, and I talked to all of them, cause I did it in stages. I completed it. But I'm one to believe that you should get out there and talk to your citizens. Not just think, okay, I'm emailing you or texting you. That's not, that's not business savvy. You want them to know that you hear them. You see them. And you know them. And that's why I stand.
Okay, so this, so everything we've just kinda talked about, a- actually about like, you know, communication and all that is kinda feeding it. This is our last topic basically, which is government transparency and community engagement. But what I really wanted, so. I think transparency is one thing and communication is another, because you can do everything in the public eye, right? Like, meetings are noticed, they're recorded, they're available on YouTube to watch live stream. You are, can come to the meetings, you, there's newsletters you can sign up for, whatever it is, right? Or not really, that's not transparency. But like transparency is one thing. Being able to communicate that with your constituents is something else entirely. So how do you think the city government is doing with transparency and communication? And how do you think that can be improved?
Well, I'm gonna tell you like this, the doors that I've been on, not good. They feel like they're staying quiet. And then when I hear these homeowners, they're like, okay, the water bills, extra fees, property taxes. That I don't know nothing. Okay, I'm getting a bill that's bigger, but please tell me why. Wha- what's the reason for it? We don't know, hasn't your alderman come and knock on your door? They're like, we don't hear nothing. They're like, our problem is, we need an all stronger alderman. That's gonna get out and understand our frustration. They're mad, these homeowners are mad. And they're not happy because they're seeing these bills, but they don't have no face to figure out why they're getting these high water bills. And I tell them, call your alder. They're like, you, you can get a hold of her, it's not hard to get a hold of her. But a lot of them showed me emails and text messages. There's a big disconnect. And, oh, we gotta have an alderman that's gonna be there for the people, cause they're, they're the ones that voted you in, not City Hall. And that's what I say, I wanna be one of them type of people where I wanna be effective enough to where people are gonna know what's really going on. And I'm not gonna be this, I'm, I'm not gonna be that kinda alderman. And that's where I stand. I love my time. And like I said, I don't like to see where it's going. And somebody needs to put a stop to this, because it, it's just too much. And listening to these people, and like I said, I have these people who are just not happy. I, I got yelled at. I had somebody call the police on me, and the police officer said, you're just out handing literatures. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, a lot of people still don't really know what like that, like what r- running for office really means. That there, you're gonna have to expect people to come to your door and.
Well, good thing, well, good thing the two officers knew who I was. And um, and, and they were like, Mike, just continue hitting your doors, you're fine. You know, so we've been yelled at, and stuff thrown at us. They're so frustrated. It, it, it's, it's not good. Really isn't. And that's why I said, I'm going out here next week and a half. And if I gotta do another one thousand seven hundred eighty-two doors, I will do it again. Now, I could blow my knees and legs out, but hey. It's well worth it for the people.
Okay, all right, so last question. Is what steps will you take to ensure diverse voices are heard in your decision-making process? Particularly from underrepresented communities? Because, and this is, I like to use this example. Your constituents believe something should happen, right? Like they, they really support whatever that something is. But you might think, I don't know, that's a great idea. Like, how do you reconcile the two?
Well, see, my agenda on that situation is, is like I told all these guys at the doors. You guys will have my email, my Facebook, my phone number, personal phone number. Any issues that you have, you call me and I will address it, whether it's cars being broken in. I will figure out why. Get over there, figure it out. Like even with car accidents, that car accident over on West Boulevard. I was over there talking to the officer, say, hey, this will be kinda weird seeing an, an alderman at an accident. That, that'll be something new. I said, yes, any issues in this district, I wanna know and I wanna be able to fix it. I even just like right now, I got a guy right now, over here on the block over from me, the people across the street are feeding birds. I'm gonna tell you.
What'd you say?
Um, he's feeding, um, across the street, they're feeding birds. Birds, they're like bird seeds? They did, but in this way, the whole one side of the other block. It's all nothing but bird pieces. Cars, the roofs, everything. Tell me why I went over there, and I talked to them. Yes, this, I said, the guy across the street's having a concern that, you know, you're beating the birds and he can't keep a clean vehicle. And he's concerned that, you know, all the bird seeds over there, that's not good. Oh, I didn't know this. Look at all them roofs, look, look at the cars. The car, one car was just buried. She didn't even know that. So she's like, you know what? She's like, Mike, I will stop, cause I didn't know the birds were doing that. See, if you try to alleviate the stress in the community, that's what you're supposed to. Just like, I helped somebody get streetlights. They were crying because they've been wanting streetlights, because it's been dull. They got them old bulbs, not the LEDs. So I ended up getting LEDs on the block. He's like, Mike, I appreciate that. You may not be an alderman, but you made sure you helped me. And that's what I, he was an old man, he didn't wanna be outside in the shadow of the dark. So I made sure, I, I've done a lot in the last two years in this district that a lot of people know who I am. And they know I care. And that's, I wanna be that candidate. For the people.
All right, so we're gonna leave it there. So what I want to say, uh, before you can give your, like, your final spiel is. I just wanna remind people that today is Thursday, March twentieth, and early voting started on Tuesday, the eighteenth. So please visit your municipal clerk's office to cast your early ballot. If you, if you don't wanna come out on election day, I am a super person, like I'm a nerd about voting. I like to go on election day. I know, it's exciting for me, anyway.
Yeah, so do I.
Right? I don't know what it is, but anyway. Um, and then election day is Tuesday, April first. Uh, polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. If you have not registered to vote, you can do so now. You can also do so on election day. Just make sure that you have um, proper documentation with you, which is you do need a photo ID to vote. And or register to vote. Um, if you are registering to vote, you also need, I think, at least two pieces of mail. Addressed to you at your current address, um, with you to, to register. So. You know, I don't, we don't have a dog in this fight. We are just presenting the coffee with candidates conversation, so you can get to know people. But all we wanna make sure. But all we wanna make sure that we are doing is encourage everyone to exercise their right to vote. So on that note, Mike, Michael, please uh make your final appeal to the voters in your district.
Okay, um, yes, the reason why I want to get the votes is due to the fact is that I see what's going on in the community. I see what's going on in the city. I wanna be that rock to represent you guys in the best way possible, by getting things right the way they should be. Yes, I'm an old school, traditional um person, but I believe in, people should be first. Political stuff can go somewhere else, because without the people, you wouldn't be where you're at. And where I wanna be is I wanna be there for the people.
Excellent. Well, thank you for joining me this morning. I appreciate you taking time out of your day to talk with me and to talking to the people who uh may be calling you their alderman in a couple of weeks. And uh, again, everyone, thank you for joining us, uh whether this is good morning, good afternoon, good evening. And um, you know, and we'll see you soon. So thank you very much.
I want, I wanna thank you too.
Oh, of course, absolutely.